Good evening. This is Mayor Stephen B. Grant from the city of Boynton Beach and welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission meeting today, Tuesday, December 15th, 2020, at 5:30 PM. Yuri, would you please provide us with the introduction?
Yes, Mayor Grant, thank you. Hello and welcome. My name is Yuri Konikov and I will be providing assistance to the mayor and elected officials during today's meeting. Before we start, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items so the public audience knows how to participate. Your microphones have been muted to reduce background noise during the public meeting. There will be specific times during this meeting when members of the public can participate by using the GoToWebinar interface. The first way is by typing their question into the questions section at the bottom of the interface. Those items will be read into the record by a meeting organizer at the appropriate time. The second way is by clicking on the raise hand icon indicating that you wish to speak. A meeting organizer will announce the speaker at the appropriate time and unmute your audio, at which time the speaker should state their name for the record. Speaker should minimize any sources of background noise and speak clearly into your device during a lot of time. I will now turn control over to Mayor Stephen Grant, who will be presiding over today's meeting.
Thank you. First, we will have an invocation by Pastor Juck Brandon of Gateway Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by myself.
Dear Father, thank you so much for loving us, caring about us, and we are grateful for all you do for us in the name of Christ our Lord. And Lord, today we pray for City Boynton, all the people in it. Pray especially tonight for our mayor and commissioners. Lord, help them to make the best decisions in the best way possible, get the best results, the best reasons. May it all turn out and work out well for our people here in the city. And I pray for our families, every man and every woman, every child in Boynton Beach. And may we look to you, especially at this time of Christmas, for guidance, for love, support, for peace, and power, and strength, and look to you in every way possible, special time during this year. And when we're so grateful for the vaccine that's coming about, we pray that it can be done in such a way that everybody will be safe, including all those in Boynton Beach in the coming days ahead. Lord, we thank you for our first responders, and thank you for all those who work so hard in the city as well. And we work together and love one another, help each other, keep our faith strong, and look to see how we can be the best person we can be in all circumstances in these days we live in. And though they're tough, they're different, you know you're the same. You give us strength and wisdom. That's what we pray for, and we thank you for this Christmas season. And those who are exercising their faith in another way, give them our best. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. But everyone, please rise forward. The Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Present.
Vice Mayor Tyson Serga.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Katz. Is absent. Commissioner Woodhough Hay.
I am here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. Any additions, solutions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mayor.
Yes?
I would like to make one addition under new business, and I'd like to have a discussion on the amicus brief that's being put forward by the city of Miami on the repeal of the gay conversion therapy ban, which affects countless young people, teens in our city. And normally, as you know, I don't like to do things in a walk-on fashion, but given the time-sensitive nature, I'd like to discuss that under new business today.
I have an agreement with you. Thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you, Mayor.
As for myself, there's two announcements, the food distribution this Thursday and the mobile testing within the city. Laura, you have that information for us?
I'll look it up. I sent it to you. I don't have it in front of me, but I'll pull it up in my email.
All right, thank you. And so I'd like to make sure we announce those. And I believe also, yep, that's it. And Jim, or Lori?
Okay, I didn't know if Jim was going to jump in. We need to add an item. We can just do it under new business for commission authorization for me to sign a release regarding environmental study for the Palm Beach County Housing Authority parcels that they are applying to dispose of for an opportunity for our CRA to bid on them. We just found out today that the city needs to be the signatory and not the county, so we're hence walking it on. And I apologize for the lateness.
There's no other additions, solutions, or corrections. May I have a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, state so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Informational items by members of the City Commission. Commissioner Hay, would you like to begin?
I have no disclosures at this time.
Commissioner Romulus?
Not at this time, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Penzerga?
No disclosures at this time.
All right. As for myself, on December 3rd, I did a video for fundraising to help fund the educational aspects of our new downtown. On the 4th, I attended a roundtable with Congresswoman Lois Frankel in regards to the vaccine distributions. In addition, that evening, I attended the firefighters' holiday drive-through. On December 7th, I attended our Tom Kaiser Boynton Beach Veterans Memorial Park for Pearl Harbor. On the 9th, I attended the Public Works Luncheon. On the 10th, and currently, I'm celebrating Hanukkah. And today, I traveled with the Chevy DTV Foundation to go to community partners. The Education Foundation has brought us information in regards to the Wi-Fi extenders, and with the Quantum Foundation and community partners, they are trying to create navigators to help families who are getting the internet for the first time. Because our Palm Healthcare Foundation, Health Air Boynton Beach's goal and mission is to help the caregivers and caregiver communities, we, partnering with the Chevy DTV Foundation, we are looking to help ending the digital divide for the seniors in our community. And so we will hopefully be working with you and bringing you back more information of any successes that we do have. And that is it for my informational disclosure. Seeing no more information, moving on to announcements, community and special events presentations. Our first is Christine Thro, District Board Director of the Florida City and County Management Association, will present a certificate of recognition to the city of Boynton Beach celebrating the 60th anniversary of the city's recognition as a council manager of former government by the International City Management Association. Ms. Thro is also the village manager of the Village of Gulf. Is she online?
Yuri, you'll have to unmute Christine Thrower.
Do that right now.
Thank you, and thank you so much. It's nice to see you again. It's actually Christine Thrower Skinner now. I've gotten married since I last spoke to you all. And I appreciate a few minutes just to recognize the city of Boynton Beach and 60 years, your 60th anniversary as a council manager of former government. I think your own manager was doing this last year for the organization for the Florida City and County Management Association, and ICMA really wants to recognize the council manager form of government, recognizing that the elected officials are the ones who make the hard decisions about how you're going to govern your community, and then you turn to your city manager to implement the policy. And you've got one of the best in the business, I'm happy to say. Lori's been doing this for a very long time and has been one of my mentors since I've been engaged in the work that I'm doing. So I just want to say congratulations to all of you for the great work you're doing. Boynton Beach has come a long way in a very short period of time, and you should all be very proud of yourselves. And congratulations, Lori, for being the mentor. Such a wonderful city.
Thank you. All right. And is there anyone else with comments or questions? So Christine, I did have a question in regards to a Village of Gulf issue. When is the Village of Gulf discussing their project on Wilbright and Military?
You are referring to the proposed site for an Amazon micro-distribution center, and it's not come back before us. We actually requested that Amazon go back to the surrounding communities and do some public engagement, and they've conducted a series of meetings. I participated or listened in on several myself, and I'm expecting them to bring something back in the near future. I just don't know exactly when that will happen.
All right. Thank you so much, and good luck.
Thank you.
Our next announcement is by Casey Young, Recreation and Parks Department Director.
Good evening.
And I'd like to... We also had the city manager from... Ronnie Breeze is here, also wishing us well, Lori. And so I'd like to thank our surrounding neighbors as well for the support of our council manager form of government. Former? Oh, congratulations.
Thank you for coming down.
I'm sorry, Casey. Can you please speak up?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Casey Young, Recreation and Parks Director. I'm here to announce the upcoming special event, Oceanfront Park, this Saturday, December 19th, at Oceanfront Park from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Oceanfront Park is a dog-friendly event that allows properly licensed, well-behaved dogs and owners access to the beach in a designated area. Dogs will be allowed off-leash while on the beach. This is the second of four scheduled events. The remaining dates are January 16th and February 20th. Free parking will be available during the event. For more information, visit our website, wemaklifefun.com, or call 561-742-6243.
Thank you, Casey. It's a wonderful time. I was there with Daphne last time and looking forward to going again.
We look forward to having you.
Our next announcement is Joe Paterniti, Utility Director, will make the announcement that the city of Boynton Beach Water Utility will be temporarily changing its water disinfection process to free chlorinization beginning January 12th, 2021, through February 1st, 2021.
Thank you, Mayor Grant. This is Joe Paterniti, and thank you, Commissioners. Happy holidays. I'm here to announce that the utility will be changing their disinfection process to utilize free chlorine for our distribution system, starting January 12th through February 1st, 21 days. This is a typical process used by state utilities around the state that typically use a combined chlorine disinfection process throughout the year. This happens annually, and customers may notice a little bit of chlorine odor in their water. And for those customers that are sensitive to that, we recommend that they place an open container on their counter or in the refrigerator for a few minutes and allow that chlorine odor to dissipate. Then they can enjoy our good, clean water in Boynton Beach. For customers that have dialysis equipment, as well as tropical fish aquariums, businesses that have holding tanks with shellfish and fish, are recommended that they contact their water professionals in the Lord to help with removing any of the residual chlorine residual in their water. The utility has also informed our customers through utility bills. We've also sent out letters to our businesses that we serve, as well as we're going to be posting a public notice in the newspaper. We're also going to be using a new tool that we have. We're using this My Civic to do push notifications to our customers when the time gets near. Anybody with questions is requested to call our Water Quality Division at 561-742-6964. I'll repeat, 561-742-6964. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions? Yes?
Yes, I just have a quick question for Joe. Thank you for that presentation, Joe. I wanted to ask, is there anything in particular as to why this is happening at this time of the year? Is there a reason for that or sheer coincidence in scheduling?
We typically try to mirror what the county does. The county is going to this process beginning on the 11th, so we're starting ours on the 12th.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
Hey, Joe?
Yes, Commissioner Hay.
Some people are having trouble with smell, and you say we should run the water for a while, but if they can't smell it, the length of time, should we run it for two minutes, five minutes? What do you recommend? What do you recommend?
Sure, Commissioner, that's a great question. We recommend that they place water in an open container and allow it to sit on their countertop or in the refrigerator for a few minutes. And that will assist with dissipating the chlorine odor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Learn something new every day. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Our next announcement is to announce that Boynton Beach's Finance Department earned an award from the Government Finance Officers Association for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Laura's going to speak to that.
Evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Mara Fredrickson, Director of Financial Services. The Finance Department would like to announce that the city of Boynton has received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government of Finance Officers Association for the second consecutive year for our 2019 financial statements. This award is representative of one of the highest forms of recognition a city can receive in the form of government accounting and financial reporting. It signifies the city's and management's commitment to adherence to best practices, timeliness, and commitment to excellence. The financial statements as a whole are completed and drafted only after a six-to-eight week audit occurs. Through that audit process, the Finance Department works closely with all of the departments and the audit team to go over areas of procurement, budget, payroll, accounts payable, cash, and grants. Our team strives for excellence to ensure that all standards and statutes are complied with. Just to give you some insight into the award process, each financial report is reviewed using a checklist designed to determine compliance with both generally accepted accounting principles and city policy. Reviews are performed by individuals from governments and public accounting firms. One thing to note is that is a national award that over 4,000 municipalities apply for annually. 382 municipalities in the state of Florida were awarded this achievement for 2019. Some accomplishments of ours for 2019, we implemented a new investment policy and diversified our investments, creating interest earned of just over $2 million. We maintained our good bond rating of AA3. We grew our general fund balance from $16 million to $17 million, and we grew our utility fund reserve from $44 million to $46 million. Our team looks forward to achieving the same measure of success next year as we grow and implement more efficient and innovative processes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mara, and I want to also thank you for putting in those charts explaining how our city and utility fund are doing over the years on a month-to-month basis. It's amazing to think that even with the pandemic, we were able to come under the anticipated budget for 2019, 2020. So kudos to you and your team. Yes, Commissioner Hay.
My comment was going to be similar. We have an outstanding finance team, and I just want to congratulate you guys. Keep up the good work. But with an award-winning city manager, I wouldn't expect anything less. Thank you.
Want to.
Next, we have plans for the MLK event in January 2021.
Yuri, you'll need to unmute Eleanor.
I did. She's self-muted at the moment.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Eleanor Chrisell, Public Communications and Marketing Director. Tonight, I'm giving you an update on our first meeting regarding the 2021 Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. The committee meeting was held on Thursday, December 10th, with 17 committee members and staff participating. The focused areas which were developed by the MLK Committee in 2019 were reviewed. Suggestions and discussions centered around the focus areas of history and education. This year, a discussion occurred on learning activities for the youth in our community through our library, recreation department, and local schools. Ideas included reading books related to MLK, sharing an available list of library books relating to MLK, posting photos and history related to MLK, and hosting youth essay contests through our local schools. Additional discussions occurred on a drive-through event, a ride-through event versus a parade, a virtual program online, day of service, and a drive-up movie event. A committee member suggested that August 18th be considered for I Have a Dream Unity Event at Sarah Sims Park, where children could read their essays and poems, as well as participate in other activities. New marketing initiatives were discussed in addition to the online ones listed above, such as posting an MLK picture and quote on our I-95 billboards each week, creating website pages on the history of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and related events and activities on our website, as well as a pop-up box on our website, and utilizing, of course, our electronic billboards for messaging. It was agreed by the committee that staff will develop a brief survey this week, and members will vote on their top three choices. Committees will be developed to assist in the implementation of the Shears MLK Celebration. At this point, I would encourage anyone and everyone that is interested in serving on the MLK Committee to email marketing@bbfl.us. We'll be hosting six more meetings prior to the event, our events, our activities, and welcome the community involvement.
Thank you, Eleanor, and I'm sorry if I missed this. Is the MLK Committee also trying to recognize any local businesses, persons, or associations?
That did not come up on this committee meeting, Mayor, but certainly we can put that on the agenda for next, for Thursday night.
I know that last year we recognized a few, and so I'd like to make sure that we keep that tradition as well.
Okay, I make a note of that and we'll put it on the agenda. Thank you.
My pleasure. And does the commission have any other questions? All right. Thank you, Eleanor. Very excited to see what's going to happen.
Thank you.
Next is our second announcement by Eleanor Chrisell, Public Communications and Marketing Director regarding Light Up Downtown Boynton.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners again. Eleanor Chrisell, Public Communications and Marketing Director. I want to go over a few new things that we're doing in the downtown area during this, but I also wanted to kind of recap what we have done for those that were not at the event. We had a light up downtown began on December 1st, and we activated 43,000 LED lights, 400 C9 bulbs, and 100 light spheres. The lights were placed on four of the city's oldest trees in the downtown area and on 18 light bulbs. Uplighting has been scheduled to celebrate the three holidays in December. Currently, the lights are blue and white for Hanukkah, red and green for Christmas, Laker next, and black, red, and green for Kwanzaa. In addition, a menorah and a kanora lighted displays were placed in front of the cultural center, and the Spartan, I hope I got that right, juniper tree in front of City Hall was lit. Tomorrow, the juniper tree will be decorated with old photographs to celebrate our centennial. We have just launched a snap and share promotion. Snap a photo in front of one of the lit trees or displays, tag the city on your Facebook, Twitter, or Instagram pages with a hashtag downtownboynton. Four lucky participants will be selected and receive a $25 gift certificate to a restaurant in downtown Boynton. And I do want, as these pictures go through, to recognize that these were taken by Daryl Saunders and Chevy DTV Foundation, and David Dennis from Welcome to Boynton Beach. They're gorgeous pictures and show what's happening in the downtown area. And lastly, I just want to, there's Mercedes and her daughter, Dewey Park. Lastly, I want to help spread season's greetings around the world, or our team did. So on December 7th, our Season Greetings postcard made its debut and was distributed in front of City Hall during the lunch hour. This postcard depict Boynton Beach amenities and included a new website, discoverboynton.com, that will assist in our tourism efforts. To date, 1,350 cards have been distributed, and the public is more than welcome to stop by City Hall and pick up a postcard at our information desk in the lobby to send to a family member or friend. And that's it, unless you have any questions.
Talk about the postmaster. With the stamp.
Yes. In fact, tomorrow, we're going to see the postmaster again. But the 100 years in Deechah that is left of the stamp, you have to apply for that a year in advance, and they have to approve your design, and then the postmaster actually by hand has to stamp that on location, or in the case of tomorrow, we'll be driving to the postmaster. But so that went all over the world in their newsletter for the year. So we received, I think I sent this information out to the commission, but we received, now you're going to have me quote a number, Lori, and I'm not going to be certain with it, hundreds of letters around the world asking that we send them. Some included postcards to do, some included letters, and some just wanted that in Deechah. So we went, I think, to seven different countries and 26, and please don't quote me. I'll get you the figures if you need it, states throughout the country and the world. So our message of Boynton Beach is open for business and has these great amenities that are listed on the front of this postcard has gone worldwide.
When we did the event on the 7th, the postmaster actually was there in front of City Hall with her team. And anybody who stopped by, she physically stamped, and we put in a special mailbox. You put your postcards to mail all around the world. So it was really a pleasure to have her and her team there personally to stamp each postcard.
And so special about that day is Bud's Chicken donated 100 lunches for anybody that filled out a postcard and mailed it. So.
Yep. It was awesome. Very creative, Eleanor.
Thank you.
Excellent. Excellent.
Eleanor?
Make sure that all the commissioners and the mayor fill out your postcards and return them by tomorrow so you can get that 100-year-old in Deechah placed on them.
Eleanor, thank you for everything that you do and your entire team. I do have a minor question. Earlier, you mentioned uplights. Are you referring to the lights around the City Hall building? Or is that something?
Around the buildings in Town Square, which would be the City Hall, Turner's Museum, and the Cultural Center, and then the uplightings that are underneath the trees. There's other uplightings, like for instance, under the banyan tree.
Okay.
K-Pop tree. And we're working on getting the art piece on the corner fixed, so this also be lit, as well as, and now we have the new Anastasia that's out that's lit as well.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next announcement is, I believe Feeding South Florida is doing a food distribution. Laura, do you have the exact location and time? We can't hear you, Lori.
I'm yapping away to myself. The Ezel Hester Center this Thursday, December 17th, from 9:00 to 11:00. Casey texts me if they're starting earlier than 9:00. I don't know if they are, and I'll correct myself. Then they're going to hold off for a Then they're going to hold off for a couple of weeks for the holiday, and then they'll continue, hopefully continue back on in January is the plan at Hester. And then Saturday, December 21, Christ Fellowship will be doing their last mega distribution from the mall site, and that is also 9:00, I think 9:00 to 11:00. So then we'll see how the new year falls and the funding issues that some of our partners in the Feeding South Florida are facing is to, in hopes to continue to meet needs if there.
All right. And thank you. And I would also make sure that people know to get there before 9:00 because there will be a line. You know, there was news today that people were waiting hours. So I don't think you need to wait that long, but give yourself at least a good 30 minutes before, if you, to make sure that you get it. And then once you get there, you can turn the car off, and it's just a little bit of wait.
Okay, it does begin at 8:00, Mayor, and my date's wrong on Saturday. It's not the 21st, it's the 19th. Thank you, Casey. But the feeding distributions begin at 8:00 a.m.
8:00 a.m. on Saturday, is it 9:00 a.m. on Thursday?
Both, at both events. We find that we set up so early that they're ready, cars are there and waiting, that they're ready to go sooner than that even, but so they are starting now a little bit earlier at 8:00.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Also, you have information regarding the county's mobile testing site?
Yes, sir. So we continue to collaborate, obviously, with the county and the healthcare district on having that, their mobile COVID testing unit come to our city, where our goal is to have that unit in our city once a week at a variety of locations. So the next, December 21, from 9:00 to 4:00, it will be at the senior center. And Eleanor will be pushing this out through social media as well. And then December 28, 9:00 to 4:00, it's going to be at the Ezel Hester Center. The requirements is, in the past, we'll have some police assistance there. ID is required, no appointment necessary. And it is not a drive-through event. You will walk up, you will fill out some paperwork and get tested. And then we can only schedule two weeks out, so as soon as the next week comes, we can do a couple more weeks out. We anticipate doing this January through February, as long as that unit's running, considering we'll see what happens after the holidays with potential additional cases.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no further announcements, we will move on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record. Yuri, would you please allow attendees to raise their hand or ask a question?
Yes, Mayor Grant.
And I see Kim Kelly has her hand raised. You are currently in mic discerning live. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello. Good evening, Board. Merry Christmas, happy holidays. First, the last public announcement, or the second to last. I hope the city does keep those lights in the park. It is absolutely amazing. What a great job. And it really does light up this whole downtown, and that's what we've been needing for years, and I hope you would really consider doing that on a year-round basis. I'm also here to talk tonight, for one, on behalf of the DBC. I'm sorry, my name is Kim Kelly, 529 East Ocean Avenue. I always forget to do that. But I'm here to talk, we just recently, when I talked to you last, we just formed the DBC, which is also known as the Downtown Business Coalition. Our numbers are growing. We're getting people joining every day, and it's a really, really great thing that I feel that's happening in this downtown. The person that I want to speak about tonight, his name is Tim Collins. He's the owner of the Fish Depot Bar and Grill and the Fish Depot Fish Market, which I believe employs over 30 people combined. Currently, he's in a place that is not in good shape. His lease is coming up. He wants to move and to expand his fish market and also to incorporate a cafe from the space he is now. And the renovations he would have to put into the lease that he's at would be astronomical, and he's not an owner, and basically, you don't get a lot out of it when you're fixing somebody else's building. We, as the DBC, always encourage ownership. It was recently brought to the DBC's attention that the property at 1102 and 1110 was just voted on from a few proposals, including his, and was awarded to a broadcasting company and survey company for 105,000 plus incentives in the amount of 95,000 over 10 years. I assume this would be an ad space. Again, there could be some things that I don't have properly right, but this is what has been told to me. The appraised value, which I also believe is approximately 350,000, and again, the CRA will be losing money if you go with the deal that you agreed upon. We believe also as a coalition that incentives you gave a company with no employee growth potential and no curbside appeal is not the direction the city should be going in. North Federal Highway has struggled for years to become an attractive, vibrant area as well as a downtown, and we need to start promoting these types of businesses, which include fish markets, cafes, clothing shops, retail, mini-markets, et cetera. There are many places in the city where offices and companies that do not require storefrontage and parking will be able to purchase and build. I hope you will relook at this project, as Mr. Collins, a DBC member, was initially offering 500,000 for the two properties. I understand that there was other things that were included, why it wasn't voted on, but since then, I hear that he has obtained promises and also the funding, and also possibly in cash. Honestly, in the long run, besides being simple math, this is what Boynton needs, not more closed doors that only invite a few workers into work in storefronts that look dull and inviting. When you drive into Boynton Beach from the north, it's not a good look. And the thing is, is that we just don't need to brighten downtown Boynton. We need to brighten the federal highway corridor. And I hope that when you go forward, that you really consider what we're discussing and take it into your consideration and possibly look at this proposal again. And hopefully, we can start promoting more businesses that are curbside appealing rather than businesses. Thank you. My three minutes are up.
All right. Thank you. Do we have anyone else with their hand raised? All right. Ms. O'Callaghan, would you like to go to the podium?
Susan, we are 1:40 stop. Please try something way first of all, happy holidays to everyone. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Mayor Grant for being the judge of the Secrets of State's 7th Annual Decorating Contest. I've worked very hard to get a lot of neighbors involved. We actually have more houses decorated than Chapel Hill does this year. So you're going to have a very hard time. I might suggest two to three nights of judging, because one is definitely not enough. I'd like to say thank you to Eleanor. I don't know if you guys are aware, but there's trees going to go up and on. And as I come home every night, I drive by and I text her and say, oh, my God, Eleanor, this one's out, or that one's out, or this one's working, that one's working. And she runs out all hours with the electrician to to try and get this resolved, and she's done an outstanding job. So you all really need to recognize Eleanor for the amazing job she's doing, keeping those trees lit all day, all night, and especially your electrician too, that she's calling out in the middle of the evening to work on this. So kudos to Eleanor and the electrician. I wanted to also let everyone know that we had about 20 people attend the Zoom first anniversary for a little meeting. Thank you, Mayor Grant, for coming out and joining us on Zoom and showing, you know, all of our friends in Italy and our new sister city what the new Town Square looks like. They were very excited. But we have a lot of people, they were just reaching out to me today saying, we want to have more conversations. We want to practice our English. You know, how can we keep this going and keep this involved? And we're actually going to have these meetings with Rendo on a quarterly basis, so I hope more people can attend. I want to point out, Eleanor mentioned quickly that they were talking about lighting up Ralph Bonzo's piece here on the corner. He actually does not want that lit up. So that might be something to take a look at that contract, because it's come up during the Arts Board meeting, that he actually does not want it lit up. So check that out. And that's all I have to say. And again, thank you very much, and happy holidays to everyone. Take care.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Tim Collins from the business at 1022 North Federal, the Fish Depot Farm, Fish Depot, Seaport Market. I'm here to speak on behalf of the decision that was made by the CRA Board last week. There were some things, after listening to the video and some of our delivery and some of the delivery and the comments that were made by the Board and by the others involved in the other letter that that I don't believe were clear. I do have a full commitment to lend, I do have a full funding commitment to lend to 90% of the current Board's appraised value. If we negotiate a contract of what we offered, we will have another present done right away. We are going to be closing in cash. I thought I just wanted to have another letter here today, which is actually our build-out partner, just going to fill the property out with us, the commitment of the money to fill out everything there. And I just, I'd like to request that we relook at this. From Kelly, you said the Downtown Business Coalition is behind this. You know, we're looking at, you know, there were some things that were said that if there was a comment, they need to go to the fish market, come into another property somewhere else. Well, the fish market's been in that building for, in that corner for 30 years. You know, and they're a radio station, and, you know, a home-based business that's looking for office space, why do they need to be in that corner? And when you're going to take a business away from where there's been an active fish market for 30 years and just put something there that's never even been there? I mean, it just, it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to me. There's this, you know, we're creating jobs, we're creating a vibrant new business on an extremely important corner. And, you know, we would like to make sure that it's well-known that we have the funding sources and we have the money to do our project.
You guys still have another minute?
Another minute?
If you'd like to still speak.
No, I mean, I mean, that's about it. I mean, we're here. We have to be, we have a short period of time. We've got 90 days to move our business. I know that we could find somewhere temporary close by to move it while we're building out the property there at the corner of Martin Luther King and Federal Highway. And there's some other options around that are available for us for that on a temporary basis, six months to a year, but what we're looking at is in, you know, eight to 10 months to have a, like, really exciting place. You know, like a flagship for the CRA and the city of Boynton, right on the corner there, where all the other three corners are all pretty much broken-down buildings. And, you know, it's up to you guys to really stand behind this and keep the fish depot on the corner of Martin Luther King and Federal Highway. Thank you very much.
Another hand raised from Jack Weir. Jack, you've been unmuted. You're currently self-muted.
Okay, thanks.
We hear you.
All right. Good evening. I am addressing you to my capacity as this year's chairman of the Housing Leadership Council of Palm Beach County. And I wanted to take the occasion to strongly encourage you to integrate workforce housing in the downtown development as you proceed with the work in the CRA and the urban core and the downtown development. Too often, workforce housing is seen as desirable, but not necessarily integral to any plans of redevelopment. I think you have a rare opportunity. I think you have some great tools available between density bonuses and D waivers and tax increment financing. So as you proceed with your plans with a myriad of developers, I would strongly encourage you to integrate workforce housing as a central part of those redevelopment efforts. So thank you. Happy holidays to all, and look forward to the opportunity to work with you as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. And I appreciate the letter that she sent me. I forwarded to the city managers to distribute to the remainder of the city commission. And I believe that we are going to have a conversation in January regarding attainable housing in Boynton Beach. And so we'll make sure that you get that invite to come speak as your position with the Housing Leadership Coalition.
Yes, the Housing Leadership Council of Palm Beach County. Suzanne Cabrera is the executive director, the staff person.
So thank you for.
Very much, Mayor Grant, and thank you, Members of the Commission.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Ms. Kelly, I do see your hand is raised again. However, you've used your three minutes for public audience. Seeing none, we'll move on to administrative advisory board appointments. We have one application, Education Youth Advisory Board, student voting. That Commissioner is not here. Do we know who the next Commissioner is in line? Or Jim, do we have to wait?
It would be.
Or clerk?
It would be Commissioner Hay.
All right. Commissioner Hay, would you like to make the nomination?
Yeah, I would, but is that the norm where if the Commissioner is not present, we just move to the next one?
Oh, excuse me.
We'll offer it to be tabled once or twice, Mayor, before we do that. Jim will have to opine on it.
It can be tabled.
I would like to table it until Commissioner Cat is back with us.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye?
Aye.
Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Next administrative, approve the request of Mayor Grant to distribute $200 to his community support funds to Freedom Shores Elementary.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye?
Aye.
All those oppose?
Aye.
All those oppose? Hearing, Commissioner Hay. You're a little late, so. All those in favor state so by saying aye?
Aye.
All those oppose? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
We can't say no to Freedom Shores?
Yeah. And so I'd like to give a little bit more information. I received a letter from one of the students at Freedom Shores asking for the city's help to save iguanas and pythons and possibly to put them back to their native habitats in South America and East Asia. I had to nicely inform her that the difference between native and invasive species and that the Florida Wildlife Conservation and Commission is not in favor of saving these types of animals. So with that, working with the Boynton Beach Garden Club, which I believe we'll have them at our next meeting, to work with planting native plants that will help support the native wildlife in the city of Boynton Beach. And the hope is, is that we can learn from what Freedom Shores and the Garden Club is doing to implement it with other schools and areas throughout the city. All right. I have Michael Sabatino from Palm Beach, from Freedom Shores. You have been unmuted.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that. Yeah, with the club, that was fantastic. Mayor Grant came to our school and to our students. And that's what prompted the letter from a fourth-grade student. After I received the information from Mayor Grant about the $200 that he was proposing, I went up to the class and I told him about how important writing is, and I turned it into some writing lesson for him too, so I appreciate that, because writing is so important to our fourth graders. And, you know, I taught him how the power of the pen has some true power to it. And the money is going to be used in our garden club, and we're going to. And the money is going to be used in our garden club and we're going to try to plant some native plants from Florida into our gardens and keep you guys posted on it. We'll send some pictures and things when we get that going. But that club has been slow starting right now because of COVID. But we're in January getting clubs back together socially distanced and having the kids stay safe, but learning about the garden. So we appreciate everything you guys do for us and Mayor Grant was fantastic. And then she had to read to them and that you responded to her letter. That was great. So thank you guys so much.
No, it was my pleasure. All right. Thank you. Now we're moving on to consent agenda. Would anyone from the commission like to pull an item from the, the consent agenda moving forward? I'd like to pull items A, D, and G. So item A is proposed resolution 20-135, approve and authorize the city manager to sign the contract for landscape maintenance services for lots and alleyways in response to bid number 34 to the low responsive and responsible bidder LV Superior Landscaping. You know, the, the two things that I want to make sure is that our vendor is not running over trash and that they're picking it up ahead of time. As, yeah, that it's, it's kind of like, it's easy to run over some plastic bottles with a lawnmower and it's going to be much harder for the environment to recover rather than picking it up. In addition, I'd like to request that the, during the city's next business over coffee, we have someone from procurement go over with, at that meeting, how to become a city vendor. And so with that, I'd like to have a motion to approve.
Mayor, was there another voice? I thought I heard something. Or is it technical issues in my end?
Uh, no, I heard another voice as well. I don't know if that was somebody who was unmuted and now muted.
I, I will second this.
Oh, no, I wasn't, do you mind making the motion?
I thought Commissioner.
Commissioner Hay made the motion? Thank you. And we have a second by Vice Mayor. All those in favor? Yes.
Just for clarification, what you mentioned, you didn't really make any changes to the resolution itself. I think you were just kind of stating something out loud.
Correct. I, I.
I just wanted to make sure, because I, I wanted to clarify that. Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's something that we have a lot of vendors that are landscapers here in the city of Boynton Beach and they were not awarded the landscaping contract. And so in regards to any type of city service, whether it's cameras, whether it's plumbing, electricity, you know, to have our vendors, have the city of Boynton Beach vendors to apply because we do have the, the building wealth that allows them not to be the lowest bidder and still be selected.
Mayor, if I may add to that, the, what finance does with each of the, you know, we've broken our BTRs down in the classifications on some of these bids. So whenever we are putting out perhaps, as, as we did for this landscape bid, multiple bids, we, we notify all of our local businesses in that line of business. So on top of, so in case they miss it in DemandStar, we actually reach out to notify all of them of these opportunities in addition to it being on our website. So we, we try to, you know, some of these bids, we, we broke, broke most of them down quite a bit, but still I think they're, you know, we literally didn't have, I don't, and Mara is available if you want her to elaborate. I don't think we had any local vendors bid on, on the project.
And, and so the, the aspect is, is that how do we, how are, do we notify? Is it through email, through fax? Is it a phone call? And so that's something where we want to make sure that anybody who wants to be a city vendor gives the, all the correct information or is it based upon the BTR information where the businesses need to update it sometimes when they're renewing their BTR?
Mara can answer that more specifically if we want to.
I, I don't necessarily need to know the answer now.
Okay.
We're moving forward.
I'll send it to you.
But if, you know, the, the point is, is that we want to make sure that potential vendors in the city know how to become a vendor of the city. And the, the meeting, the, the first of, what is it? The first Thursday in December, December, or January, January 7th. It, I think would be a good opportunity for a presentation on how to become a city vendor and make sure that your BTR information is correct.
Coordinate that with David Scott, definitely.
Mayor, I couldn't agree more. I've had similar conversations with David and some others and, you know, I just don't know how many of our local small companies know how to use DemandStar? Is that what that's called? Even I don't know. And so people, if they don't know, they can't apply. And so we are in need of an educational event. So yes, completely on board.
All right. Thank you. And we have a first and a second. And all those in favor state so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Next is the proposed resolution 20-138, approve, award and authorize the city manager to sign contract with Central Square for a total of $50,040 in accordance with quote, for consulting and project management services. And so our city manager told me, oh, this is about our ERP system. And I, it's enterprise.
Resource planning.
Resource planning. So this, this is something that I know Commissioner Romulus, we had to do a lot of updating of the city's data systems. And so before we were on servers, before we were doing a lot of different things, now we are moving into an HTML cloud-based platform that allows all of our departments to coordinate with our finance department. I believe this is what you're, is correct, so that we can better serve our residents. And this is something that I'm glad to see that the city of Boynton Beach is doing is embracing technology to make sure that we are doing our jobs effectively and efficiently. So with that being the case, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved and thank you, Mayor, for bringing attention to this. Absolutely, I agree.
Second.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? In addition, for proposed resolutions R20, 139, 140, and 141, I believe our city manager is going to give, or our assistant city manager, Colin Groff, is going to give us a presentation. This isn't 100% completion, this is substantial completion. So there's still some work left to be done for the fire station, one, city hall library, and the police station. However, this was part of our contract with a CFP that we needed to do for the approval. And so in order for me to, to sign documents, we need the, the city to approve it. So I'll request the, the commission approve it as one item.
Yeah, Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager. I don't have a full presentation tonight, but we will be having one in January to close out the project with, we want to celebrate all the finances on the project and how well the project went. But tonight, as the mayor said, these are documents that are required by our lease. And basically what it says is the city has accepted the buildings or occupying the buildings and they meet the specifications that we required from our funding partner, which is community CFP of Boynton Beach LLC. And we have met those, there's a few items remaining on a couple of buildings that we're coining up. We will have those finished by the end of the year and we will be officially in our buildings and complete it.
Excellent. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Consent bids and purchases over 100,000. I'd like to pull item D. Does the commission want to discuss any of the other items? And I have a motion on the remainder of the consent agenda. Over 100,000?
We'll move.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Proposed resolution R20-146, approve and authorize the mayor to sign an extension of a consulting agreement with Florida Caribbean Architecture, Inc. in the amount of $101,250 for the project management and professional architect services for the new public works facility to be located at the city rolling green complex at 515 Northwest 14th Court and the renovation of improvements to the existing building and the site for the new utility water quality laboratory project to be located at the former fire rescue station number two site at 2201 South Congress Avenue, Boynton Beach, Florida. The, the two aspects of it, I'm very excited that we are working to upgrade the public works facility at the rolling green site. I believe we're in talks with the South Florida Water Management District to create a paved road in order to get to that site without going through the neighborhood residential in which that means the, the current public work site in the, the middle of the heart of Boynton could be used to develop into other mixed use projects. In addition, the, that location of 2201 South Congress Avenue, I know it is a highly trafficked and probably could be a good retail site, but after discussing it with the city manager, Colin Groff, I believe that it, at the, at the, the current time, it could be, it should be used as a utility water quality laboratory. I, I was in discussion with a couple of our breweries to see if they had any interest in the site. Because it is on Congress, there is parking available. I, I do believe that it would be a good commercial site in the future. However, we do need a new water quality laboratory for all the testing that they're doing. Our current site is off of Jog Road at the, the West Treatment Plant and it is, and needs updating. So I'm excited where the city is going to developing our land and moving forward. So with that being the issue, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. We have a public hearing. The city commission will conduct these public hearings in its dual capacity as local planning agency and city commission. The current applicant is requesting the item be tabled through January 19, 2020. So I do believe we may need a motion to table to that time.
That'd be January 2021, not 2020.
You got it.
Motion to table.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to city manager's report, Police Chief Gregory will give us a presentation on traffic safety and issues surrounding driving off-road vehicles on public streets. For the public who would like to ask a question or raise their hand, please, please do so now. And staff, can we make sure that they have that capability? Okay.
Yes, Mayor Grant, they do.
Mayor, Commissioners, manager, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for the opportunity to come back and discuss this issue of ATVs and dirt bikes briefly, as you recall, at that last meeting, a member of the public came to the, to the dais or to the bike and expressed concern about the availability of city land and parks to, to ride ATVs and our dirt bikes as well as what we're doing about them. So I'll touch on both of those topics very quickly in this brief presentation. Next slide, please. As mentioned, the status of the park, definitions of what an ATV is defined as by Florida statute as well as dirt bikes, and then some of our local Boynton Beach statistics regarding our interaction with these vehicles. Next slide, please. So I've spoken with the park, the public works director, Andrew and Colin and other staff members, and at this point in time, there is no plan in place to designate and/or construct a park with the sole purpose for folks to ride ATVs and/or dirt bikes in the city of Boynton Beach. As you recall, that, that was the specific question raised by the community member, where, what, where were we with the construction and or designation of some land for that purpose? And as of this moment, there, there isn't any, but obviously that can be revisited in the future should the commission elected officials decide to do so. Next slide. So, all of our traffic laws are governed under Florida state statute. The chapter of the statute says, are generally 316, 316. There are a couple of other chapters that are involved when it comes to regulation and administration, but for most of our actual traffic enforcement comes under 316. Next slide. The term all train vehicles, we're referring to any, the mean, many means any motorized off highway vehicle that's 55 inches or less, weighs less than 1,500 pounds, designed to travel on three or more non-highway tires, and is manufactured for that purpose of recreation and can be driven by one or more persons. They often look like the image you see on the screen there. Sometimes they can also have double riders or large enough for double riders. Next slide. This type of vehicle, and you can click it one more time, is not a street legal vehicle. They are designated just for off-road purposes. Next. Then there are the dirt bikes and motorcycle, dirt, dirt bikes. It's defined as any motor vehicle having a seat or saddle for the use of the rider and designed to travel on not more than three wheels in contact with the ground. Dirt bike is mo, motor, is a motorcycle and can be legally operated on the roads if it has the proper equipment, is properly registered and titled, and the operator has a driver's license with the appropriate motorcycle certificate and or endorsement. Excuse me. So the, the qualification areas, just inherently by the definition under statute, the ATVs are not street legal, can't be made to be street legal, they have to be driven off-road or trailered to their destination. The dirt bikes, on the other hand, can be altered and having accessories added to them to make them street legal. Unfortunately, I would say 99.9% of the ones that we encounter on the street here in Boynton have not had those accessories added to them to make them street legal. So just on face value, most of them are not legal and are subject to be stopped and the drivers questioned at any time we encounter them. Next slide. So what does it take to make one street legal? So first of all, if it's a two-stroke engine, then it can't be converted. By statute, those are not acceptable. Then what are the accessories that a vehicle must have to become street legal? Well, first and foremost, they have to be registered with the Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles. They have to have a Department of Transportation approved headlights, so not just any type of light on the front of it, but a DOT approved headlight for motor, for the size of a vehicle or dirt bike. Brake lights, turn signals, license plate lights to illuminate the license plate, side mirrors, and they must, must, must have a horn. So those are all things that would need to be added to the dirt bike for it to start to become a legal vehicle to ride on the, on a public roadway. You might also notice by the time you add all those things to the dirt bike, you probably could have bought a motorcycle that comes with all of that. With regard to the driver, they must wear eye protection. They must wear a helmet and have the insurance coverage. And the rider has to be over 21, 21 years of age. And uh the rider has to be over twenty-one, twenty-one years of age. Uh, so often we encounter people well under the age of twenty-one uh operating these vehicles on the street. As, and of course, they don't have the headlights, they don't have the turn signals, license plates or licenses for that matter, so they're not registered on the roadway. So again, uh, just virtue of taking this out of your driveway and down the street of you can, you could committed a civil infraction or traffic infraction and could be stopped by the police and questioned and or cited uh with one of, uh, one of a number of violations. Next slide, please. Uh, these are the site, uh, the violations that we most frequently uh issue for folks driving uh a, a dirt bike or an ATV on the roadway. As you see, they, they line up closely with the ones up from the previous page, but this all just also provides you the statute number uh that's referred to uh when we, when we made that prior slide. Um, again, these are traffic infractions. They are not felonies. They are not violent crimes. So the issue here also comes down to when, uh, especially since we're dealing with often uh younger individuals, uh, some of which find it uh uh fun, you might say to, to challenge the police or to run from the police. Uh, we have to often uh measure how far we go to, to uh pursue and or stop someone on one of these vehicles for the purpose of issuing them one of these traffic citations. Uh, now if their roadway behavior or conduct is so egregious and or dangerous that they're putting others' lives in, in danger, then of course we'll, we'll do everything we can to try to uh stop them and stop that behavior. But for those who are just riding or, or doing something silly and, and trying to get away, uh, it comes down to how much liability are we willing to take on to pursue and try to stop someone fleeing and zigzagging through traffic and or sidewalks on one of these types of vehicles for the purpose of issuing them a traffic citation. There's a risk uh balance reward equation. It doesn't always work out. Uh, we do take on liability in the event we started to pursue someone for this traffic violation. And uh they end up crashing into some uh innocent third party or into some uh one else's personal property or private property, there, there very well could be liability attached to us pursuing those uh, those operators. Next slide. Last, I'll just mention uh of our experience last year and this year, you'll see uh we've pretty much doubled. I think some of that had the, as a factor of folks, uh, this being much more in the public eye and, and we're getting a lot of more attention from residents making complaints. The, the dirt bikes often are very loud and noisy, so people hear that and they are uh uh willing to come forward and, and make calls to complain about it. So in two thousand nineteen, we received about a hundred and fifty-five calls for service regarding these vehicles operating and uh parking lots and on roadways. Uh, he had six crashes and zip, but zero fatalities as of last year. Uh, this year we see those numbers almost double in each category. So we've gone from one fifty-five to three hundred and sixteen calls or complaints about those vehicles on roadways, eleven crashes, um, and one fatality uh thus far this year in two thousand twenty. Lastly, I'll just wrap up with uh mentioning some of the things that we do to try to mitigate uh these issues. Uh, and that some, and it falls into the categories of uh, uh, education and uh enforcement. Uh, as we find out about folks who newly acquire dirt bikes or ATVs at their homes or residence, we, we certainly do have the traffic unit try to stop by and educate uh these new owners uh as to what the rules of the road are, what the laws are that regulate uh the, the where, the uh riding of a, uh, the bike or ATV or a dirt bike as well as the equipment that's required to operate them. Uh, we also respond, as you see here, uh, more and more to complaints from the public about uh wrote these vehicles being out on the roadway. Uh, we, we issue warnings for educational purposes to those who were remorseful and uh citation to those who, uh, who, who may be multiple or multi-time offenders. And then lastly, one of the things we'll be doing is uh doing more public safety announcements. You should probably be seeing some of those in the next several days leading up to, to the Christmas holiday and into New Year's. Uh, for those people who haven't, uh, or who are still Christmas shopping, letting them know what the rules of the road are in our public safety announcements on social media. Uh, as well as on our website, we'll have information posted. Um, and then we'll continue these uh different types of educational tools with PSAs uh going forward into the new year. We really want to try to curb some of the activity. I'll tell you, I don't believe we'll be successful with eliminating it. Uh, this is a social activity. Uh, there are these dirt bike clubs, ATV rider clubs in Palm Beach County as well as in the city of Boynton Beach. People live here, they purchase these things, they're sitting in their backyards and home, and I'm certain they're not gonna just get rid of them. Uh, they're gonna continue to ride them and many of them don't have trailers to move them from point A to point B on. Uh, and they want to show off to their friends on, on some, on social media websites of the new tricks they've learned. Um, and there are the competitions that they create for themselves after, after midnight in a parking lot somewhere. So, uh, I, I, I expect it will continue. We just want them to try to do as safely as possible and follow the law uh whenever possible. And uh, obviously, when we get complaints and the like, we'll, we'll be there to, to enforce when we can't educate. Uh, so that's a quick uh re- review of uh where we came from, where we're at and uh and how we're dealing with, with this particular issue. I'm welcome, uh, welcome any questions you may have at this time.
Um. My first question is, is that in the attempt of fleeing from an officer, is that not, is that a misdemeanor or is that a felony?
Um, it can be a felony if there, if there's egregious behavior. Um. And but the uh, there, there's a misdemeanor fleeing as well, so it kind of depends on the uh circumstances.
Okay.
But again, it is, uh, fleeing is not a violent felony. And a good portion of what we look at with our pursuit policy falls down to uh limiting our pursuits to violent felons. Uh, and that's a modern standard that many agencies have uh adjusted their pursuit policies to, to be aligned with. So even if it was a felony uh fleeing, that wouldn't necessarily just justify a uh all-out, no bars hold police pursuit, similar to if you had uh uh passed a bad check. It is the same thing as if you robbed a bank. So we aren't going to necessarily pursue you through traffic and put others' lives at risk over you cashing a bad check versus if you had just robbed the bank or put people's lives in danger uh and uh by using violence.
Okay. Um. Yeah, I, I guess this is something that we, we need to work with our community partners to, to help educate them. Uh, I know that uh when I was uh having uh the, my, the Juneteenth event, uh, we did see some ATVs and these were minors with the, their parent watching them. And so I think we, we need to help educate parents as well that this is not a toy to, to get your children. Um, you know, unless you have the, the capability of telling it to a location where you can do it. Um, this is not something that is meant to happen in the city of Boynton Beach.
Yes, I agree wholeheartedly and perhaps, and we'll be working on, on this, but obviously it's only voluntary. Uh, and that is education of the, of the uh thick folks selling these bikes to folks uh in the community. Obviously, they're motivated to make a sale. However, it'd be wonderful if they could pass out the rules of the road uh when they make a sale or propose a sale to someone to say, hey, here's a pamphlet that goes with this uh purchase that explains what the lo- local laws are, actually what the state laws are regarding the, the riding of a ATV or a dirt bike.
Now, the, I guess, if, do these dirt bikes have uh serial numbers or uh registry? So that we know whose uh dirt bike belongs to who in case one is stolen?
They do have serial numbers, uh, but unless they register them, they're not gonna be, uh, we won't know about who they belong to, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner. Commissioner Hayden, uh, Vice Mayor.
Uh, yeah, um. Chief, uh, that one fatal crash that you were talking about? Is, is, is that the one where the kid was kind of what I call hot dogging down the road? What, 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 what happened there?
The one that we had just most recently, um were to a ATV and a dirt bike that collided with into one another.
Oh, wow. Okay. Um. I, I now when you stop one of these uh kids, uh, when you stop one of them for a particular infraction, uh, do you take the liberty to uh look over the remaining of that bike for other infractions and and do whatever you do? Like, like give them a warning or, or give them a ticket or a fine or for not having proper equipment on that? How does that, how does that work?
So the, it is a state statute violation, so we do cite them under Florida state statute when a, a, a citation is issued. And depending on the circumstances, if we are able to find um and encounter the, the operator a block away from home and they're remorseful and are willing to go back home and park the thing, uh, that, that may be a warning situation. Uh, someone popping wheelies down Congress at two AM, that may be a different circumstance, uh, or, or riding in one of these large packs. Uh, so it really depends on how egregious their conduct is, that they could either, whether they, a warning or with that uh traffic citation. Um, which you, I, I showed you the list earlier of what, what those citations look like.
Yeah, I, I I see some of these kids, they, they pass my house, uh, they're, they're doing these uh stands on one leg or two, two wheels or whatever. And uh, not much I can do as, as a citizen because, you know, they, they here, they gone. Uh, but what is this a um a challenge for other cities and, and, and what have other cities? Uh, what, what have they done as far as what you, you found out?
It certainly is a challenge for all of us. Uh, and I talked to the chiefs in, in Delray and uh West Palm and Riviera Beach. Um, uh, frequently, uh, we, we often see where they're riding from city to city. They're often doing this uh either uh afternoons on the week, on the weekdays or late at night during the week. Uh, they'll go from Delray to Boynton. We'll find them here in the, uh, some large parking lot, we'll run them off. And they go to Delray or they'll go up to Riviera or back over to West Palm, uh, Lake Worth. They're, they're bouncing between city to city. And it's a it's a wherever they, they find the least resistance is where they'll congregate.
Um, I, I, I guess we I know I don't particularly care for speed bumps, but have you, have you found that that said, uh, speed bumps to be a deterrent to these uh bike riders, uh, these uh the ATVs?
Uh, not particularly, uh, by nature of the vehicle, the, they, they're kind of built for rough roads. So they have the speed bumps and they will jump across, they'll use the uh, the larger speed humps uh which are like four or five feet wide or uh with, they'll use that as a ramp to go airborne. So, uh, it, it doesn't really act as a deterrent for the, for the dirt bikes and ATVs.
So to a large degree, we're somewhat at their mercy.
To a certain degree. But again, they, the violation is a traffic infraction, so it's not as if it's a uh criminal offense or, or violent crime of that nature. Uh, and we obviously want to manage our traffic uh uh rules. We want to encourage everyone to follow all the laws and the rules. Uh, I think the, the biggest tool there is education. Uh, and then we've ramped that up to, to enforcement with citations, uh, when we don't get compliance. But uh, there is a, a limit that we have to draw the line some point before we go into uh using pursuit tactics to try to, to capture these folks.
Thank you, Chief Gregory.
My pleasure.
Mayor.
Yes.
I just had a question for the chief and uh Commissioner Hay pretty much asked most of it. Uh, so thank you for that, Commissioner Hay. I wanted to talk about deterrence because it sounds like this is very difficult to enforce. Um, and as Commissioner said, we, we're, it almost sounds like we're at their mercy. Uh, but because, as you mentioned, chief, this is, uh, most of it is planned events. Uh, are we receiving any information in advance? You know, are, are these people meeting up on a Saturday at this time? I mean, do we, if we know these things in advance, if, if that's happening, could we then uh increase police presence in, in wherever areas these may be happening? To kind of create a message that says, oh, not over here. Uh, and we're on to you and, and so it's not a you know, complete solution, but if we were to increase presence on those known dates on Saturday nights or whatever it might be, um, it seems to me it might deter them from even coming here at all.
Excellent question. So we have been doing that when we know of uh planned events uh and well in advance. Uh, there have been a few of those where there's been advertised car shows. Uh, one of the recent ones I remember in the last couple of months was uh for over, uh, to be held over at the mall. Uh, uh, after, you know, close to midnight or something like that, we saw that several days before it was to occur. We ramped up our staffing on that night and then we worked with the mall to uh confirm they weren't uh planning to host this event and if they wanted us to prevent folks from going onto their property uh after hours to uh do their car show and, and bike. Um. Extra exhibit. Uh, we've had a couple of, of, of several of those incidents throughout the year where we've been able to do that. Most of it, however, are just impromptu, one person calls another person who calls another person, hey, what are you doing? Nothing. What are you doing? Okay, get your bike, meet me over here. And, and they just run and meet up, almost like a pop-up type of uh bike riding activity. And then uh we've seen a couple of them, uh, where we find on social media after the fact where they literally have planned to ride through all the cities and, and while they're in each one to do some sort of uh antique, uh, whether it's shutting down traffic at Congress and and gateway while they're here in Boynton for a, a while and then going down to Delray and doing something on Atlantic Boulevard or going back the opposite way and go north where they'll actually hit two, three, four cities in one night uh at a impromptu, let's go out for a ride, uh, kind of uh messaging. So it's, it's not always a well-planned advertised event. It's just a, a matter of, hey, what are you doing? Let's grab, grab the bikes and go.
Thank you, chief. And my final question is, uh, are LPRs helpful in this situation?
Since they don't have license plates, not particularly. Uh, but what it, the, the camera footage is, so one of the things that we've seen success in some other agencies and we've tried to uh do when we have the ability is using our body cameras and our video uh, uh surveillance cameras around the city to record the operators while they're, they're, they're doing their antics or putting on their, their shows. They try to get uh identifiable uh images of the drivers or the riders as well as the vehicles. And then after the fact, conducting an investigation to try to figure out who this person is from social media and or other methods. Um, and then issue them the citations after the fact.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
Is there any other questions or comments from the commission or the, the public?
Uh, you know, one other uh question, I guess it's a kind of a frustration because I see these guys all the time. Um. Is there some kind of noise audience that we could attach to these guys? Because, I mean, you get about four, five, six guys coming through the neighborhood and, I mean, it, it's, it's shaking the windows, but I, I guess there's nothing much you can do, but uh it's, it's really a serious problem. Um. That they just, and, and they just go up and down the streets. Uh, I guess we could call you guys and and report it, but by the time you get here, they gone. So there's not much you can do.
Yeah. Uh, well, like I said, we, we, once we get more of the cameras up around uh some of the areas of the city, uh, they may, we may get more coverage and footage that way, and then we'll be able to respond quickly or quicker to where they came from. And again, uh, a lot of them are local, so they may have the bikes or the ATV parked in the driveway. They may have it parked on the side of the house, and if we see it from that perspective, then we can use those images to try to match up that bike with this picture from that night and, and issue citations uh after the fact. Uh, or if it's something even more egregious, try to uh move forward with a charge. But uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's difficult to try to stop right at that moment in time.
I agree, Jake.
Very welcome. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. So Susan, do you have a question?
Yeah. Thank you for bringing this up, Commissioner Hay. Um, I live very close to the sea crest scrub and people in my neighborhood complain about this constantly. You know, we hear these ATVs going up and down federal and we hear them going up and down sea crust. And I know that they go back into the sea crust scrub and they damage it as well as obviously scaring the wild animals, including the gopher tortoises, which we all know are, you know, on some kind of protected level. Um, is there something that the police can do when they're in the sea crust scrub? Because that seems like that would be a way to add additional charges to these people. Cause you're, you know, scaring animals and, and endangering the endangered animals. So is that something we should be looking at, Chief Gregory?
Yes, Michael Gregory, Police Chief. Uh, if they are in uh, on city land and or on someone else's private property that will, would be considered If they are in uh, on city land and or on someone else's private property, that will would be considered trespassing. So certainly notifying us and we can respond out there and if they're out there. And refusing to leave the property, then they can certainly be charged with trespassing, which is a criminal charge versus the traffic civil infraction.
Right, I and I, the problem is, is, you know, I hear them going down the street, but I'm not close enough to the scrub to know when they're actually in the scrub. But you can see the track marks running through it and people who live there obviously are are asked, you know, commenting. Mary Law specifically that she sees them driving through. And she does a great job of trying to stay on top of protecting the tortoises. And I'm just thinking that might be a way to kind of amp up the charges to be more of a deterrent in our city. And I know it's a county piece of crap, is it a county or is it a city? So then we should definitely be doing something to protect our animals as well as it being a criminal, you know, a trespassing charge. And I know when I called in the past, you know, the whoever answers kind of doesn't take this overly seriously. You know, is that something that we need to be looking at within the police department? Or should I just look at the fact that they go, there's nothing I can do because by the time we get out there, you know, they're in the next city already. And I'm not trying to belittle the operators because they do an outstanding job and I understand their point of view. But at the same time, they're screeching up and down federal and I can hear them several blocks away, so obviously it's a problem.
Yes, if they're if they're on city property and or someone else's private property that wants to press charges, we we will respond to that. We will cite them if they refuse to leave the property and if they're obviously committing any other violations. If they're harming the wildlife. And or the turtles perhaps, though that can be a separate environmental crime and there could be enhanced penalties for that. As you may very well aware, there's all kinds of extra environmental laws for molesting certain types of turtles and different types of wildlife. Uh, that comes with additional penalties, so all of that comes into play. Once we get the call and once we get here, they can evaluate and do the investigation.
Well, then maybe it sounds like that's where some of your cameras should go for future use is by our different scrubs. The ones that we know up on our sea crust and one on South Sea Crust. Maybe that's a way to, a place to point your cameras and, you know, nice fundraiser for the city with the enhanced fines, so thank you very much.
So Commissioner Hay, you have a final comment?
This is, this is my final comment, uh, I I just. Chief Gregory, you know that little trail that goes around? Cerro Sams and it goes through uh, Button Cemetery and all that. Is it about, is it a a violation for the ATV's to to be riding on that thing? Because if if someone is walking on that, and I believe that's that's city owned. That could be a problem and it has been a problem. I've had people complain to me and that's why I'm asking so many questions about it, this will be my last one, but.
No, I certainly am.
There 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 are people who are riding those ATV's on that little trail. And uh, people complained to me that they almost got hit, you know, so. Is that a violation? Uh, that's on city property, right?
Yeah, yes, it would be, the that that um, that land, that that little walking area on the Linear Park, I believe you're referring to. Is is actually divided, it's either going to be City of Boynton Beach property or it'll be the Water Management District property. Depending on what section of it you're in, both of which I believe are, you know, obviously the city land we can control. They prohibit the use of the ATV's and dirt bikes and that, and I believe we can double check if we have this trespassing affidavit in place with the Water Management District. To make sure that's enforceable on their property as well.
Okay, I'll talk with you offline, thank you.
No problem, my pleasure.
And we do have a couple of hands raised, first is Ramona Young. Uh, you've been unmuted and followed by Ms. Alexandria Wilson. Ms. Young? You're self muted.
Ramona Young. One oh one South Federal Highway. I'm gonna be the devil's advocate here. I think I heard Chief Gregory say that. These ATV's were not licensed, there's no license plate. And that they're not illegal. And the people selling them are legal. So I would just like to suggest for your consideration, and I don't know, and I'm probably coming out of left field. They're not killing, robbing, stealing. Murdering or doing any of those illegal things. So I don't know if there's a place in the city where there could be a conglomeration that a timeframe be set up. For these people to do these activities with some. You know, overseers and then they register their vehicles and you know who they are. Rather than condemn them and try to make them criminals when they really aren't. They're bored, obviously, and need something to do. So I don't know what that portrays in the city because I live on Federal Highway. And there are not ATV's running up here particularly, but we have people with um. High motor cars with noisy mufflers that are just as annoying. And can kill somebody crossing the street. And no one's doing anything about that, there's, the only only fast thing I see going on is a police car riding. Up and down the highway to go to some other event, perhaps to stop one of these people. So I would um, request you give some consideration to doing something positive about it. Rather than the negative approach as to make, trying to make them out of some type of criminal.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Young, for your comments. The the problem is, is that the, these vehicles do not require driver's license or insurance to buy. So, you know, you, for example, you know, you can buy a vehicle from a a used car dealer, they they sign the title over to you. They don't necessarily need a driver's license or. You know, insurance, but you know, you do need a tag. And the the there's certain aspects of the property safety equipment needs to be operating, there needs to be seat belts, there needs to be headlights. The issue with these vehicles is that they're they're not meant for the road at all. Uh, ATV's. I'm I'm gonna let me finish, ATV specifically. So the the question is, is that are we trying in the city of Boeing Beach? To change the law of the the state of Florida to allow them to be legal? And I don't think we are, I think we are preempted to do that. The the aspect of trying to find a place for them to go, you know, the only place that I think that the city has is our eco park. And the problem with the these types of vehicles is that they normally destroy, uh, they don't really enhance the environment. But that is maybe something that the city wants to consider. However, it would still be illegal for these vehicles to go over the gateway, you know, to go over on the roads. They still need a trailer to get to their destination because there is no place in the city. That allows ATV's and dirt bikes. Uh, and that's that's kind of where the the mentality is, is that is riding a motorcycle fun? Is riding these ATV's or a snowmobile or a fun, yes. But the the aspect of it is, is that it's not necessarily legal. And as the chief mentioned, it's not a criminal offense. But it is a violation. And and that's kind of where. As the city commission, you know, do we want to make this a criminal offense so that people know that it's not allowed in the city? Do we want to? You know, and request that from the state legislature? Or do we want to continue what we're doing and trying to educate people of the safe uses and times for this? Which is not in the city of Boeing Beach. Uh, because there's not too many options available for things that aren't allowed. And it's, uh, it's that sort of mentality is, is that. We're not trying to tell people that they can't do this ever. We're just saying that in order to do this, you can't do it here, for example. It'd be like someone saying, hey, I'm swinging golf, you know, golf ball and glove club in my backyard, but I don't know where the golf ball's going. You know, it's not illegal to do that, but you know, there's there's certain things that can happen. And this year, we saw one of the, we saw multiple incidences where bad things have happened because people weren't following the rules. And, you know, the the question is, is that do are, we want to focus, which I think we should have look. Uh, that our Parks and Recreation Department tries to find a place in Palm Beach County, which I believe there is. For people to go ATVing and set up a city event around that. That is a possibility. Because I know that when I said, hey, we should all go to the FAU football game. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Department was able to do that. And so, uh, are you interested? In learning of the the city's Parks and Recreation Department finding acceptable ways to ride dirt bikes? And ATV's outside of the city limits?
Yes.
Okay, now I I would be agree with that and. I think that's something that we will put on future agenda to see what we can do. To give people the opportunity to use ATV's and dirt bikes in Palm Beach County.
Pam, may I speak?
Yes, you may.
Education, for one thing, I mean, if the police pull someone over or you know someone that has a bike. That there should be some paperwork that they're given since they don't need a license or anything like that. To educate them about and 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 they may already know that. But I I just have the issue with. Trying to make people criminals that are not criminals, they're just, you know. I know they're incorrect, I understand that. And I would just hope that they're somewhere, now how they get their bike there, that's an issue. But that falls on them when you're being educated as to how they have to transport that. So. And I fall back again on the hot rodders up and down federal highway. That have license plates. So I hope it you will consider finding a place for them and letting and educating them. As to what they're doing wrong and who they can hurt and hurt themselves.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just make one comment?
Yes.
Well, Police Chief Mike Gregory, uh, just to clarify for the the record there, the uh, my statements earlier and as reflected in the PowerPoint. Show that the uh, driver's license with motorcycle endorsement is required for the dirt bike. The dirt bike without all of those accessories like headlights, taillights, brake lights, turn signals, side mirrors and the like. As well as the ATV are illegal uh, from a traffic citation perspective to operate on a roadway. So you can only move them around via a trailer. And then the, so they're not criminal, those are traffic citations, like if you ran a red light or a stop sign. Unless they were caught on city property or they were in private property, then it would could be a trespassing uh, violation if they refused to leave, which would be, which would be criminal. Uh, so I just wanted to clarify what was criminal, what wasn't, and that uh, that that they cannot operate on the roadway without modification. They have to be on a trailer, so if we did find someone uh, far away from their residence with this and we stopped them, uh, then we'd have to. Excuse me, have that vehicle, that bike or ATV towed to where it's going to go next because they certainly couldn't continue to drive.
And because this is a uh, traffic infraction, it is not a crime, civil forfeiture does not apply. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Ms. Wilson, uh, you're currently self muted, uh, if you'd like to unmute your microphone and.
Hello, City Commission, Alexandra Wilson, twenty forty Northwest Second Court, Boynton Beach. Um, I just, I I would like to thank Chief Gregory on that very educational presentation, I really appreciate it, I think the city appreciates it. I just have a couple of questions. As we both, as we all can see, the um, there's the calls and the fatalities, everything is increasing. And the individuals are showing us as a city, they're not stopping, no matter how many laws you implement, no matter what's going on. They come from Boynton Beach, Derry, all the way from Palm Beach. So that's there, that's three cities that's having this big issue. And it's a big issue because it leaves people like myself who don't ride these ATV's in in harm's way. I may may hit one and that's not, that's not what we want to go. So I'm asking the city, Mayor Grant, can you look into like maybe getting some type of, um, what do they call those? Investors looking to open up a facility park for the individuals? Because as we know, when I was growing up, illegal car racing, that was big, big. But then when the men came up and started Maroso, which is now Palm Beach International Raceway. Racing on the street, it still happens, but it's not as much. So I want to ask the city, can we look into people, some type of people open up a facility? Because the people are not stopping, no matter how many laws we create for these bikes. They're not stopping, but we we have to do something about this, it's not safe.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Wilson, and so um, the the thought that I had is requesting our Parks and Recs Department finding a location. Available in Palm Beach County because there's no facility in um. What is it, in the city of Boynton Beach that I know that could house multiple people riding their bikes in a in a safe manner? Uh, you you'd probably need, you know, ten, ten plus acres at a minimum, probably a lot more. And so I'm not aware of any location within the city that has that sort of facility that isn't environmentally protected.
And I'm I'm totally with you that on Mayor, but I'm, I brought that up because it's three cities in this. City of Boynton Beach, Derry and Palm Beach, we all are having this issue and we all see what happens on the weekend during a weekday. My sister live in the area where this happens all the time, dirt bikes get on her street and right up and down her street every single day, Mayor Grant. Every day, my sister just had a little baby, it disturbs the baby, this is an issue. And so I'm just asking the city, can we look to more like the the young lady before? Can we look to something like a facilities to have these days in events where you have it a week? Some type of meetup, something, because it really is disturbing normal people's lives. And these kids are, kids are adults, they're not stopping when they're riding these ATV's.
Correct, and the the sad part is, is that they're harming the community. And I I, like I said, I've been ATVing before and I I know that it is a fun experience. And it is something that, you know, is is not meant for the city, I did it in the a countryside area. And so I I understand where you're trying to ask the city to see if we can find a place for them to do it. Wherever that place is, they still would need a trailer to get to that location. So that is, and that is why I'm requesting our Parks and Recs Department, see if we can find a place for them to go. With the trailer. Or figure out a way that the city can accommodate it with the the current equipment that we have. Because we do have quite a bit of equipment, I I saw it all at the Public Works Facility. And when COVID nineteen is a little bit safer and we can have, fit people on buses. Or create a sort of event outside of the city limits, this is something that is the only idea that I can think of that is uh, legal. Because, as I mentioned, for us to have an event going on roads. Because we don't all own all the roads, there are county roads, there are state roads. That we would also have to get permission from them to close down the road to allow these vehicles that are not allowed. to allow these vehicles that are not allowed on the road. So it's, it's something like we want to give our residents the ability to use these recreational vehicles. However, it is unlikely there is any location within the city limits to use them properly.
Okay, I, I, I totally understand, Mayor Grant. Are you willing to open up the conversation with the city of Derry and Palm Beach? And seeing if they have any location where they can house the facility?
I, I think that's, it's a wonderful idea and I think it's, it would be a great aspect for tourism. And so yes, that is something that I believe we need to have that discussion to, to alleviate the problem of illegal recreational vehicles on our roads.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Before we move on, is there any other comments from the, the City Commission or anyone else with their hand raised?
Mayor, just one brief comment. It sounds like this is a topic prime for the League of Cities. There needs to be coordination on this, so that might be one of the best venues to do this.
Okay. Well, are you making, or will you be presenting to the League of Cities?
I can certainly bring it up and do a mini presentation. I don't have a problem. But that is One Avenue.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay.
All right. Next is discussing recommendations provided by the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board for naming city facilities in Town Square Project and Downtown Boynton Beach. Do we have a presentation?
Yeah, Casey's going to report on the REC Board's findings. And I think there may be someone from the REC Board. I'm not sure. I need Casey to tell us.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Casey Young, Recreation and Parks, Recreation and Parks Director. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update from the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board meeting held on December 7th. During this meeting, the naming of city facilities in Town Square was discussed. Ordinance 06078 provides guidelines for naming any city facility. This ordinance requires recommended names to be discussed during a public meeting and reviewed by a five-person panel. The Recreation and Parks Advisory Board was selected as the panel. During the December 7th meeting, names for the following sites, the park space by the new amphitheater, the open space west of the historic high school and the, and the playground and the renovated high school were discussed. I presented to the Advisory Board staff recommendations for names for all three locations. The recommendations were Centennial Park for the space by the new amphitheater in reference that the park construction was completed during the city's centennial. K-Pac Park for the open space west of the historic high school in regards to the historic K-Pac Tree on site. And Boynton Beach Arts and Cultural Center for the renovated historic high school, which will now be utilized for arts and cultural programs, special events, weddings, art exhibits and concerts. The Advisory Board agreed in consensus that all names were appropriate in describing all three facilities with no additional names provided to commission tonight. As the commission is aware, an active naming rights campaign is underway. Should the city receive funds for any of its facilities included in the campaign, they will be renamed accordingly. In the meantime, marketing materials are being developed to advertise the new facilities, which will be completed after names are decided. As, as we prepare to open these facilities to the public. If there are any questions, I'm, I'm willing to answer those.
No, the only comment I have is that the Boynton Beach Arts and Cultural Center is, is a long name for a building. So I don't know if you have considered a nickname for it as well.
Not at this time. We have not come up with a nickname.
Okay. But seeing no other comments, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second with discussion?
Second with discussion.
Commissioner Romulus?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I, I think we can still entertain some new names or maybe a shorter name perhaps for the Boynton Beach, whatever else that those words were for that facility.
The Boynton Beach Arts and Cultural Center. The issue is, is that the Schoolhouse Children's Museum is the Boynton Beach Cultural Center, Inc. Is their nonprofit entity. And so we cannot use that name. And so the Parks and Recs Board, well, it's called the Arts and Cultural Center because of the, the pottery and the other types of art that is available. There will be a gallery in the, the front lobby area. And you know, it's, you know, we can just call it the A and C as a nickname. So everybody knows.
If there are no better suggestions, then I guess so.
Yeah.
I often hear staff mayor default to, oh, it's at the cultural center. You know, they, they often will refer to that as a, as a shorter name. The Arts and Cultural Centers, though, that's a common name amongst many facilities.
Yeah. So it, it's, it's kind of like, we want to say that it's more than just the Civic Center because it incorporates, you know, the, the previous art center and then the auditorium, you know, similar to the playhouse before. So that's the, the aspects, you know, you can still, you know, because it's been the old high school for a very long time, you know, the, the, there's, there's going to be multiple names for it unless someone spends the money to get their name on it.
No.
And I do see Julie Mondello requesting to, to speak. Julie, you're self muted?
I'm unmuted now. Thank you. Um, this is Julie Mondello, I'm the Chair of the Park and Rec Board. And we did have discussion with regard to this subject, especially the names, all three names. We did approve all three names, I think. Like Christina, like, kind of like what we were talking about, that is definitely a long name. But I think that, you know, that we could put in parentheses BBACC for some of the stuff and still that's a lot of, a lot of letters or even AC, Arts and Cultural Center, ACC. But because of that issue with the Schoolhouse Museum, we, we kind of had to do that. Now, just to keep in mind, let's hope we get somebody to sponsor us, right? Because then we'll be able to, to use that name. And then it may, it may, you know, change a little bit over time with whatever nickname we use, depending on what we get for sponsorship.
Yeah. All right.
That's it.
Thank you so much, Julie. Is there any other comments from, yes, Commissioner Hay?
I really don't have a problem with the name. You know, Boynton Beach Arts and Cultural Center, because as been stated, it's going to be called probably the, the Cultural Center. And you know, I, I've known others titles that were long, but you, you're going to abbreviate it. So I, I really don't have a problem with it. But is it something that we have to do tonight in terms of selecting one or are we going to open it up to other suggestions? Where are we on this? The, the, it's a discuss recommendations.
Correct. The, from my knowledge is that the Parks and Rec Board did have the, the open to the public discussion available. And they are making the, the recommendation to us as this. The reason why it is imperative that we move forward is because they are creating the marketing material. For example, the, the Fun Fair Magazine, we, we need to have the, the title of the building where all the events are and activities are happening.
But these are the three names that they're submitting here tonight.
Correct.
Well, the, the thing about the Centennial Park, that would be my second choice. Because it was created, organized during this, our centennial celebration. K-Pac or whatever, how you say that. I mean, a hurricane could come along and blow the tree away. I hope that doesn't happen, but that's kind of temporary to me. So that would be my third choice. I, I lean more towards the Boynton Beach Arts and Cultural Center. That would be my first choice of, if I had to vote on it tonight.
So these names are for three different, three different places. So the Centennial is for, is for the amphitheater. The K-Pac Park is for the playground. And the old high school is the Boynton Beach Arts and Cultural Center.
That's fine. I don't have a problem with the names.
Okay.
Okay. So we had a motion and second, we, we've finished discussion. Does anyone else from the public with their hand raised or would like to ask a question? Seeing none, is there anyone else from the commission having a further discussion?
For clarification, we are voting on accepting the three names for the three individual areas as presented, right?
Correct.
I want to make sure I know what I'm voting on.
Yes, we are accepting the recommendations. However, we are able to choose whatever name that we would like if we agree on it.
Okay.
And so I do have someone from the audience here that would like to speak.
Hi, Susan Sawyer, 140 Southeast 20th Way. I didn't even know that this meeting was happening over at Rackham Park, so I would have gone. I thought we were calling the Historic High School the Civic Center, which I thought was a perfect name. Because it's taking in all the stuff that was in the original Civic Center that got knocked down. So I, I personally think the high school, we're not going to call it the Historic High School. Then let's call it the Civic Center, which I think was an appropriate name for what it is. And that's nice and short. So that would just be my two cents. Thank you.
And Ms. Sawyer, yes, it was kind of a temporary name was the Civic Center that was, the commission agreed. However, that is something that the, the commission can still agree on it. However, we would need an amended motion. And I, I do not see an amended motion. So if there's no further comments, all those in favor of accepting the recommendations as stated by the Parks and Recs Board states so by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we're on to new business. We have JKM developers have provided their monthly update to the City Commission on the Town Square Project C-Attached. And do we have someone pulling that? Yuri, are you pulling that up for us? Thank you. Can you zoom in? Nope. You know, control up screen. Yuri, can you just maximize the window?
Yeah.
There you go. Now scroll down. Yay, we got it. Stop. So I did want to speak to the, the City Commission. I did receive information of a third-party developer regarding the central parcel to have negotiations with JKM developers. I do believe, you know, the, the current motion and directive of staff here is that we are not to negotiate with JKM developers in regards to anything but the completion of the contract as stated or a dismantling of the contract. And that prevents a third-party developer from working with JKM developers and having them sell the property to someone else to help expedite any sort of parking garage. Does this commission want to have a discussion or allow leeway for city staff to have JKM developers or entertain offers from third-party developers at this time? Jim, I know you weighed in in regards to the current law complaint filed against JKM.
Yes, Mayor, just to be clear, it was my recommendation that the commission defer any action with respect to the project until such time as JKM files its responsive pleading to the declaratory judgment lawsuit that we filed. And their responsive pleading is due on December, on or before December the 31st. So the first, certainly the first meeting, perhaps the second meeting of January, the commission will be in a position to discuss further and even to have a closed-door session just to discuss the litigation and the options.
Mayor?
Yes.
I support the recommendation. I think we can wait a few months to get some clarity first before we begin on this route.
Okay.
I agree.
All right. You know, I'm in a disagreement because the longer we wait, the longer the garage is not being moved forward. So I do. Yes.
By the same token, Mayor, this has been a project or an event that's been off track for a long time, off the rail. And I want to make sure as we move down the road, that we're moving in the right direction. So based on the recommendation of legal, a few more weeks, we can address this in January would be adequate. So I don't, I don't see where moving right now would, 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 it would just complicate thing in my mind.
All right. I, I agree. And so I look forward to having the conversation with the, the full commission in January. And that I, I would request, Jim, is it okay if the rest of the commission sees the letter?
Yes, it is, Mayor.
Okay. So I'll ask the city managers to forward that letter to the, the remainder of the city commission. All right. Moving on to item B, the amicus brief. Ty or Commissioner, Vice Mayor Pincera?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been waiting for this moment. So I wanted to just inform the commission of the state news happening in regards to the ban on gay conversion therapy. And, and perhaps I should preface this by explaining what that is. I'm not sure how many people are familiar.
Before we have in, are in, we have banned conversion therapy in the city of Boynton Beach in regards. So we, we have had this discussion. We have moved forward with the, the ordinance. And so, you know, I'm in favor of what you were saying to file an amicus brief to the, the court of appellate jurisdiction to the, the current, I think, federal ruling.
That's right. So my understanding is that we have that ban, Palm Beach County has that ban. But a panel of three judges from the 11th Circuit has struck that down. And so the city of Miami has then filed for a petition for hearing for not just the three judges, but for all 12 judges of the 11th Circuit. And so they are submitting that petition. And so the request is for this commission, if we could join into the amicus brief to show our support that we are not in favor of gay conversion therapy in the city. It is something that's been denounced by the American Psychiatric Association. It does not work. It is a form of torture. And frankly, it's not only ineffective, but it's contributing to the rise in suicide rate. So that's a conversation that's already been had, as the mayor mentioned. And so the request here is to join on to that amicus brief.
All right. Would you like? All right. Would you like to make the motion?
Yes, I was interested if anybody else wanted to say anything first, but I move to direct the city attorney to, uh, join in the amicus brief along with the city of Miami in support of Palm Beach County and the city of Boca Raton.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor states so by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Our pleasure. And, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's something that, you know, in the past, you know, people tried to teach people how to use their, to write with their right hand, even though they were lefties. And there's certain aspects of human, humans that we once thought were different. And now we know what is, uh, the correct way of thinking. And so, uh, I, I'm definitely behind, uh, the, the commission and, and our vice mayor in supporting, uh, the end of conversion therapy here in the city of Boynton Beach.
Mayor.
Yes.
Um, a- as we've all voted unanimously to support this, I, I, I wanted to ask this after the vote in order to make sure that, you know, there was no question of, uh, support for the initiative. I simply wanted to have the city attorney, uh, explain for the benefit of the public and for maybe those who don't understand legal jargon, just what an amicus brief is and, and what type of obligation that, um, just places on the city in terms of, you know, just what it means.
And Jim?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, well, uh, an amicus brief is really something that you could think of it as like a friend of the court brief where you support one position or another on the side of a case that has great public importance. Um, so, uh, there's really not significant work that would be involved in doing that. Uh, because there are other lead attorneys that are, that are going to, uh, handle all the work. We will essentially be, just joining in a group of people that support the position that is reflected by the city's ordinance banning conversion therapy.
Thank you, Attorney Chair Officer, for explaining that. Again, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, uh, in, in the event that any, anybody didn't understand what an amicus brief is and what our position will be, uh, as a city as we go into this endeavor.
All right. Thank you. Next, uh, we have an environmental, uh, study on the Palm Beach County Housing Authority's land within the city of Boynton Beach that, uh, they are requesting sale at auction from the Department of Housing of Urban Development. And so our city manager is requesting us to file a motion to allow her to sign the, the documents necessarily to sign off on the environmental study. And you will give us the environmental study afterwards. Yes. Do I have a second?
Second. With discussion, Mayor, could, could the city manager just explain to me how that works? I mean, why is that required? And, and I don't know anything about this. So could you just give a brief overview?
Absolutely, Vice Mayor. Um, as, and my quick, uh, quick learn today as I delved into the world of HUD, which, uh, can be frightening. The, you know, we've, we've been working, Mike Simon and I, and, and with the mayor's help and the commission's support, have been working with the Palm Beach County Housing Authority for probably a year now. To encourage them and, and assist in any way to have them move, dispose of, sell, or develop the 35 plus parcels that they own in the city that are vacant properties. That would be beautiful for infill and, uh, and new housing. So the housing authority is now at the point where they have to apply to HUD to dispose of these parcels via auction, however. Highly complicated process. I couldn't even begin to explain. But as part of that, uh, the housing authority was required to have an environmental study. They hired a consultant to have an environmental study on each parcel, which is, which has been done and, and has been submitted. They actually submitted it to the county thinking, uh, because they also have parcels outside of the county that they're including in this disposition application. So when it got to the county, the county reviewed it, said it looks great. And they went to, to sign off on it or put it on their board agenda and, uh, county administrator Baker called me last night and she's like, I just found some fine tune language in the HUD in the, actually the regulations, and I don't know what they're officially called, but that because those parcels are in our jurisdiction and we, we set the land planning and zoning, that we are the, we should be the ones responding to that and signing off on the environmental. So I literally found this out this morning and had Jim help me out looking through all the paperwork and, uh, we simply need to go ahead and, and sign off on that so they can then move forward with the application. And I wanted to tell you, I think you'll all be thrilled to hear also that, um, they are including the Gateway and Seacrest parcel in this disposition. So there's more than just those vacant properties that, you know, the corner at, uh, Gateway and Seacrest, the housing authority, the southeast corner, that's one of them. So once they get the application submitted and we know every single parcel, we're going to, I, I know Mike Simon will be talking with you as a CRA board about, uh, bidding on those properties potentially or picking them up through, you know, through the auction to then allow us to move forward with getting some, uh, but mostly I think affordable and, and workforce housing on those sites. So this is tremendous progress. I don't want to hold it up. So when Tammy McDonald from the housing authority called this morning, we're like, we, we were jumping on it to try to, um, help them finish up and get their application in before the, the year end.
Let me, let me just add that, um, and Lori just alluded to it a little bit, which is we ordinarily would not bring an item to the commission with so little information and such short notice to add it to the agenda. But time is of the essence on this particular matter. There's a deadline that the housing authority has to return all the appropriate paperwork. I did review the HUD regulations. Those are set forth in the code of federal regulations. Um, it does appear that the city manager would have had the authority to sign off on the documents had there not been a commission meeting tonight. But with HUD, you just never know, you know, what they turn up at the last minute with respect to a deficiency in the formalities that we follow. So having the, and bless the manager's signature on the document is the safe bet. Uh, there's no potential exposure to the city. There's no, there's no, uh, cost to the city. Uh, the process that Lori's laid out, uh, would simply expedite that.
Thank you to both of you. I appreciate that.
And so I believe we have a, a motion and a second. Is that correct, Jim?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor states so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Remember, city manager, you're not supposed to be voting.
Yeah, I'm not voting. I just wanted to mention, may I mention one more thing that I think you'll be real clear, pleased to hear about. I learned today as well. Um, so the housing authority, we are going to, beginning in the new year, um, Mike and Tammy and I are going to have a recurring monthly meeting because she said one of their, their priorities is whatever proceeds they get from the sale of these properties, they want to reinvest in Boynton Beach. So, um, we will be coming to you. We're going to start some initial conversations with them and we all agree, we need to stay in touch frequently to find out as we follow the application process, but excited to hear that however those properties end up in, in terms of a sale, if it's CRA or whomever, but that the housing authority wants to take that money and then reinvest it in our city for affordable housing. So big improvements from a year ago, right, Mayor? From what you've.
I, I, I went to my first, uh, housing authority meeting in 2017 when, uh, the old executive director was there. So I'm glad that after three plus years, we're finally making some progress after decades of, of nothing.
Yeah, their new staff was wonderful. So.
I would request, um, that we get a copy of their application. Yeah. If you could, uh, get not a, you know, get a electronic copy of that so that I may review it. Um, uh, because then we will know what got submitted to HUD. And when it will.
Precise property list for you as well.
Well, I, I'm not the, the proper list. I just wanted to make sure that we know exactly when it's, what was filed with HUD and when it was filed.
Okay, absolutely.
All right.
Mayor, I would like to have that property list, uh, i- if it's not too difficult, uh, Lauren. Uh, that, yes, very good. Okay, thank you.
All right. And now we, we're talking proposed resolution 20 dash 147 extending ordinance, uh, 20 dash 30 to continue provisions for public meetings by use of communication media technology during the COVID-19 public health emergency. Jim?
Well, as you know, we have adopted an ordinance that allows us to meet, uh, virtually, uh, through December the 31st. So this ordinance contains a provision that allows you to extend it by resolution. I don't think anybody would debate that there's been a lot of controversy regarding, um, the state of public health in the state of Florida and, uh, specifically in Palm Beach County. Uh, therefore this resolution has some findings of fact by the commission, uh, that, um, necessitate, um, your acceptance by adopting the resolution and extending, uh, the, uh, virtual meeting deadline until March the 31st of 2021, which is the projection of when a significant number of people may have the benefit of having the, uh, COVID-19 vaccine. Of course, the city commission controls the ability at some point, either in January or February, uh, to shorten or extend that extended deadline.
Jim, I think, uh, the March 31st is an appropriate, uh, timeline. The, the question that, and so moving forward with that, I'll, uh, accept a motion to approve as stated.
So move that we extend it to March 31st, 2021.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further conversation from the city commission?
Mayor.
Yes.
I support this as well, but I just wanted to add a related comment. Now, looking at the video, I noticed that there's, you know, very few people in the room there with you. And so, you know, moving forward, given that there's so few people, uh, I would be, I would be okay with going back into the chamber, knowing that, you know, there really isn't a crowd. Um, and so, yes, let's extend this as an option. But I think I might be comfortable, if there's only going to be five of us in the room, I might be comfortable, uh, going back into the chamber.
Um, uh, yeah, that was the, the second thing that I was going to talk about. Um, so if we can move forward with the, this motion and then we can talk about moving into the chambers.
Sure.
Uh, so seeing no further. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Just wanted to remind the commission that within the body of the original ordinance that you're extending, it does permit, uh, some hybrid combination of virtual and, uh, and physical meetings.
So, thank you. So seeing no further discussion from the city commission, all those in favor states so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Um, in regards to, uh, the chambers, uh, I was able to use it for the general employees' public attention meeting. I tried to use the, the day's computer, not realizing that there was no microphone or, um, camera, because they are somewhat older. So, uh, I do believe that our city manager and that we have already approved, uh, getting tablets um, with keypads and wireless mouses to be at the days with us so that we will be able to scroll and view our own things as well as look at items that are on the, the board. So I'd like to wait until we move into chambers until that technology is available. And so is, uh, is the, the board, is the commission okay with that, uh, request?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And so the only thing, uh, in regards to future agenda or is not necessarily, yeah, yeah, is future agenda, if we can get something in about a month or two. Maybe March, uh, is, uh, uh, a facility within Palm Beach County for parks, uh, for recreation vehicles and determine if, uh, what we can do with our Parks and Recs, uh, department. So that people who want to use, uh, recreational vehicles have an ability to do that and where they can do it safely and kind of at a city sponsored event. Now, I don't say, think that our golf courses, but you know, maybe one time when, if the department environmental protection allows us to close our landfill, that would be a location. Uh, that is a possibility.
Uh, Mayor, I'll support, you know, this exploration, but, uh, just from a personal standpoint, I really don't think, uh, these groups are going to do that. Um, and certainly not in the long run. These are social events. They want to do it at night. They want to do it in long stretches of road, along wherever, Lauren, Seacrest, you name it. Um, and they're doing it across cities. So I think, you know, it's definitely worth exploring. That's why I'm going to support it. Uh, but maybe I'm just a little pessimistic about how effective that will be, but, but so, but that's where I am.
I, I, I agree with you, uh, but, you know, based upon the, the public comment is, is that if we don't even try to give them a legal option.
Right.
It's something that we, we should inquire to see what are the legal possibilities of using parks and, uh, using recreational vehicles within Palm Beach County? Because maybe it's, uh, an educational of where to use them. So that is something where if there's a farm or something out in unincorporated Boynton Beach that allows this, this is something that we could, uh, explore.
Sure. And I get that and I support that for those reasons.
For clarification, we, you staff will reach out to Palm Beach County Parks and Recreation and talk to them about any known facilities. Um, or any public lands that they may be allowing this or considering. Um, other than that, I think, you know, you're talking private property, but we can certainly find out from them if, if there are sites that are out there or possibly in, in the planning throughout the county. Is that, I'm not quite sure.
So the, so for example, I, uh, rode, uh, an ATV when I did a, uh, summer abroad in Australia and went to New Zealand. There was a sheep farm that, you know, part of the, their tours is that they have recreational vehicles going throughout the farm, similar to the way when I was in, um, I think Jamaica or another Caribbean island. They have certain trails and aspects where you can use a recreational vehicle. Um, you know, in more than most northern states, they, they have the, you know, recreational vehicle trails or, uh, you know, snowmobile trails or a private property that allows people to do that. So we've been requested by our residents to find a legal way to use recreational vehicles. And, uh, I think that's where we're going to try to come up with a solution to a problem that we're having where people are violating the, the laws and having serious accidents and even fatalities in that violation of law. So.
I, I really think we, we, we're fooling ourselves in terms of expecting these guys are gonna, gonna get this through education. I think the best solution is what you were stating, uh, there, Mayor, is to check, uh, with the other cities and try to, uh, put the minds together to come up with another location where they can, uh, you know, ride because the, the, the layout of, uh, of Boynton Beach and this particular, uh, east, east coastline is, is nothing like Jamaica and, and, and none of the other places.
Yes.
That you're talking about. So I, I think the best thing to do is to bring the minds together of the other cities and let's, let's take a look at what, what we can do. Cause it's, it's, um, they're, they're not going to just volunteer to go two or three miles or five miles or wherever this location might happens to be. Uh, I just don't feel that's going to happen, but we'll see.
We, yeah, absolutely. And, and that's kind of where we are asking is, is that if, you know, people can't do it according to the rules, do we want to request the legislature creating tougher rules? You know, similar to the way that we have seatbelt laws, not necessarily helmet laws here in the state of Florida. So I feel that this is the, the appropriate way in that if nobody wants to do it the, the right way and people, if there's still a nuisance and still an issue, we have to request the state legislature to make this more of a criminal offense because driving without a driver's license is a criminal offense.
We have to put a little more teat into it.
That's, that's correct because. That's, that's correct because, you know, we do not want to see any more of our young persons getting hurt having, you know, on, uh, street roads when they shouldn't be on street roads.
Yes, we should try at minimum.
Yeah. And so, uh, so the commission, is there any further comments before we close the meeting?
Oh, Mayor, yes. I do have one, one thing I'd like to bring up. I didn't have a chance to talk to staff about this. This came back to my memory quite late. I've had conversations with various business owners that went through the CRA and the grant programs and applying for that and all of that. And, and one of the recurring concerns that I, I heard was there seems to be disconnect going from getting CRA help and then going to the city and taking care of whatever other steps need to be done. I'm not sure if any of you else have received similar feedback, but one of the suggestions I heard was perhaps there could be some sort of CRA city liaison, but we may not even need to make that a separate person, but just some sort of process. So you know, once they go to the CRA, they're kind of dropped off and they're like, here you go, you figure out the rest. Or vice versa, but something to kind of streamline the process. And so I, and honestly, Mayor, I'm not even sure how to word this request. I'm not even sure if it's a CRA item or a city item. It's something in the middle.
The, the way that I would see it is, is that the, the communication aspect of, you know, a checklist where if a business is coming into the CRA district, that the business department lets them know of the CRA and the CRA's website. And at the minimum saying, hey, you're in the CRA. This is the information of a CRA because you may have people from other locations that aren't familiar with a community redevelopment agency. In addition, you know, the, the aspect of the CRA saying, here's who you need to contact at the building department to help you get the checklist of everything that you need to do so that they can follow through with the application. I think that, that's kind of where we're asking for information, not necessarily liaison. And so I think that we, you know, for any new businesses coming into the CRA district, make sure that they know what the CRA is. And any new business in the CRA requesting for funds knows exactly who to contact in the building department so that they can move forward in, in expedient manner.
Right. Something to just streamline the process.
I don't necessarily about streamlining. I just think, you know, the information.
Right. And Mayor, I was going to just add in, I, I don't think it's lack of this not being done in order to kind of give some credit to staff. I, I simply think it's just, there isn't a, as I think someone mentioned earlier, there isn't like a, just here is a sheet of paper or here is some type of document that you can follow and just kind of check off all these things, you know, that you should do or need to do. And you know, I think if we're going to say we're a business-friendly community here, that we should just try to, you know, make it as simple as possible for individuals when they start a business here and continue to just raise our profile as that, you know, a place that is friendly, business-friendly for people to come here and have success when they start up their businesses or expand their businesses. And the other thing I would add to that is that I, I know that we approved earlier the electronic access to things. So I think that's another medium that we can use to just kind of streamline, as, as Vice Mayor was mentioning, streamline just opportunities for businesses coming into the city.
And I, and I would thank Mayor, because we are one big happy family and now we live in the same household, it would be something that would be somewhat easy to do is to have that checklist or electronically or something. I think that's feasible. You know, no problem.
Absolutely. And so I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy Holiday, a Wonderful New Year. 2020 is, is coming to an end and I wish anyone a healthy and safety and safe time with their friends and family as we wind down the year.
You too, Mayor.
At the Quanza and Feliz Navidad.
Yes. Do you mind providing us with the closing?
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor Grant and I will go ahead and do that. As a reminder, a recorded version of this session will be posted to the city of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available on the city of Boynton Beach's website at boynton-beach.org. This concludes today's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, the city manager and city staff, thank you for attending today's City of Boynton Beach Commission meeting. Be safe and have a great night. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Me and adjourned.
Everyone, good night.
Good night.
See you next, see you next year.
See you next year.